It's 6:35 and I'll call us to order. I'm Gerald Peters, Chair of the Planning Board. We should all do the pledge of allegiance together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I should probably just make some opening remarks. And can you hear me with me sitting down?
Yes.
Some opening remarks regarding this amended shoreline zone ordinance. Ours has not been amended in Sangerville since 2000. The state got after us in 2006, 2014, 2015 to make amendments to bring our ordinance to the state's standards. And Bridie got notice from the state that they wished us to do that again. And we had some concerns with the forestry part of this ordinance. We had to adopt one of three methods of dealing with forestry. So we, the planning board reviewed the new ordinance, the old ordinance, and compared it to see how it would affect our citizens and people needing a permit to expand or build or end with their property rights. We took that serious. We've taken four or five months review unindulgently comparing them. There's a couple of major differences between this and what we have. One is forestry. The other one is the 30% rule, expansion rule, for any building closer than 100 feet from the water. Bridie did the negotiating with the forestry department. So I would like to have her bring us up to date on that if you would.
Okay. What we're talking here is commercial zoning within the shoreline. So closer than the 100 feet. So to be commercial, they have to be selling wood and it has to be a lot greater than two acres. We had three choices. We could allow the state to take over and deal with all commercial forestry as they do throughout the rest of the town. And to do that, we would have to amend our ordinance and take out all the mentions of forestry in there. Our second option was a blended approach where we could sort of oversee it. The state could sort of oversee it and it would be a circle of, our CEO would go out and the state would go out and back and forth. And the third option was to adopt something that was tougher than state's standards and to go it all on our own and have our CEO be in charge of our ordinance. What we decided was that because the state is in charge of all other commercial forestry, that we would like to have them be in charge of the shoreline commercial. But before we made the decision, I contacted the state and they assured me that it was commercial. It's not a camp owner trying to stay within shoreline zone and you cut a tree. It's not, that's not what they're trying to deal with. So I talked to, I then talked to DEP. They sent us the requirements of what we needed to remove. And we're recommending that we allow the state to deal with the forestry issue.
Does that mean cutting down trees in shoreline?
Commercial.
For commercial properties. How many properties are affected in Sangerville? Are there very many?
No.
You mean like Main Street?
I think that's commercial meaning cutting trees to make money.
Oh.
Yeah, not commercial like downtown.
Commercial property.
Yeah, forestry, making money, cutting a tree that's by the water. That's what Bridie's saying.
Yeah, there are a couple of bigger tracts of land, but none that... There are two or three bigger tracts of land that it could possibly affect. However, it doesn't affect what they can do. It just affects who monitors them.
So you mean like along the Escadaquas River or something like that?
Along the river, along the Enhanic Pond, along the Center Pond. I don't even know if there's any woodland that goes up to my pond. Is it all open?
In resource protection, it would also come to the planning board.
Correct.
And for the code officer to deal with.
Now, assuming that we found anything, the code officer would just go to the state anyway. I mean, we'd say, hell, we've got somebody doing this.
That part of it actually remains unchanged.
True.
It's in shoreline zone and by riverous segments and with all the language, that part still is planning board, code enforcement issue.
Because we don't want people cutting all the trees all the way down the walk, right?
That's right.
We don't want people...
Well, they can't.
Oh, they can't. People can't mow down all the trees all the way down to the shore. And we want to keep it that way, right?
The state sets minimum requirements. We've always followed those minimum requirements. The change is that we're not in charge of enforcing it, basically.
Oh, okay. So Sangerville doesn't enforce it, but the state would come in and go, you guys are not supposed to do that.
And in all likelihood, we would be the ones who would find it. Code enforcement would probably, in all likelihood, find it unless, you know...
Today, most people have been very good about that.
Correct. Most people know there are rules. They might not know what the rules are, but they know that they need to go check and make sure that they're following them. So that's...
And the new ordinance, as it addresses that issue, is not much different than the old ordinance. It's a little bit more specific with tree size. But it's, there's no major difference in what we would do locally with that. Are there any other questions on the forestry part of it?
No, the small lots are not attractive for timber harvesting anyway.
No.
Most of the shoreline today is bought up for something other than forestry.
Can the town, can the town make rules like if you do cut these trees down, we're not fining you like $5,000 per tree? Can we make up our own rules like that?
It's in the ordinance.
I had a property and then I sold it and it breaks my heart because the people came in and they cut down all these like really, really, really old big trees. They just cut them down because they figured they'd take, they hit on the fines. And I was wondering if Sangerville could come up with our own fines? Like could we fine them $10 a tree if they did? Couldn't we?
It's not in our ordinance. Whatever, we can only do what...
The state.
What the people vote in as an ordinance. That would be more strict than the state standard probably. Because you was outside the shoreline zone.
I was in the shoreline zone, but I was really good about it. But then when I sold it to the new people, they came in and cut all the trees down. And they just hit, they just decided they'd get fined and they didn't care. It was like $500 a tree and they didn't care. So they mowed all the trees down and paid the fine because that's how rich they were. They were from Massachusetts and they didn't care.
I can tell you how that would go if we dealt with that. Our old ordinance.
We burn them down.
The old ordinance and the new ordinance. If they do that, they're going to be reforesting to the specifications that George gives them.
Would make them plant some new trees on them?
Correct. Certain amount of this, this, and this. And it's in the ordinance. We can enforce it and...
Well, once they're down, they're down. These were beautiful, beautiful old trees and they just mowed them all down. And you know what they did? They stored their upside down canoes on the stumps. Like it was like adding insult to injury. It made me cry. So like how can we make that not happen? You know what I mean? Like how can we keep people from doing that? Can we? Once the chainsaws go, that's it, they're gone. Let's nail them with some serious fines, like 10 grand or something per tree. Like I want to make them pay for that. That's how I feel. That's how I feel.
We've done reforesting in cases like that.
Okay.
And it is not any fun. And it's expensive.
Okay, okay. Then they have to pay for it?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Remarkably, we don't have the problem with that that other towns do. I was working at Sebeck Lake a month ago and my sister had a new camp built. We went right by the, all the rules, took out some trees, dead stuff, limbed them up so you could see the lake, did what we should do. And you look right across to the Bowa Bank side, which is under Lark, state rule and enforcement. And I could count three lawns, 150, 200 feet wide. They went right from the camper to the water.
Wow, you mowed it right down?
Flat on a pancake with a fertilized lawn.
Wow.
They won't do it here, I'll tell you. They won't get away with it.
That's what I'm trying to say. I don't hate to have that happen. People just do it and one minute it's there, one minute it's gone. And like, then what do you do after they've done it? I think we need to nail them with some fines or something. That's what I'm saying. Big fines.
The problem with fines in dealing with things like that is some people don't care about money.
Well, good, let's make the fines really, really big.
Before, before we had the shoreline zone and ordinance, so when we first had it in 1993, people would do things like that and say, I'll pay the fine. What's a fine? Because money is not an object to them.
To some people, yeah.
And it's really not to us either. There'll be reforesting here. We've already done that a few times. Is there anything else on forestry? Then I should probably just explain the, the major difference in these two ordinances. They both say basically the same thing, except in the section of nonconform infrastructure, not lots, but the structures concerning the 30% rule. We presently have the 30% rule. And the beginning language for it in both ordinances is the same. They kept the 30% rule, but left the volume off from that. Because it used to be 30% by footprint. The volume is gone. The 30% is still there. But for the planning board purposes and for the people, this one is more fair. It was, in our original ordinance, it's subjective. It says these 30% expansions and so forth is a planning board issue. And the language says setback as far as practical. Whether or not you could do that, is it practical? Determined by the planning board. And the new ordinance spells it out. So it'll really be more equitable for our citizens. I can cite some examples of it if you like. At first, I didn't like it until I had gone through this a few times. For example, in the 25, first 25 feet from the water, you're not going to expand it by 30%. That's one difference. The other difference is that if it's 75 feet back from the water, yes, you can expand it by 30%. But it's going to limit, instead of the volume, it's going to limit the height of it. Or no greater than 1,000 square feet in the 75 feet from the water. Anything less than 100 feet, it's 1,500 square feet. And these are not easy to read quickly. Before, we didn't have those guidelines. But we had the volume rule, which was a killer for people.
Nobody understood that.
It is very unfair. A small camp, like we had some camps that were 12 by 16.
Right.
And they wanted to add on 30% and increase pitch on the roof so they could have a loft. Had to tell them no.
Really?
Yeah, yeah. In that way, this is more fair.
Yeah.
We can...
I think so too.
And we can apply it equitably. That was what I liked about it. At first, I was upset because of the first 25 feet. But that's always been in DEP hands anyway. They would issue the permit and then we'd have to issue a local permit. So the state was going to do it anyway.
And you can go sideways, the guy said, like as long as you're not going toward the water. If you go sideways, you're fine.
Yep.
Back, is that my, am I right? Like I think you're, I think you're fine as long as you go lateral or back.
And that's still, you can still do that. Not in the first 25 feet. And in fact, most of those that are within 25 feet, it says wholly within the 25 feet. It's a small camp.
Yeah.
And if they want it bigger, they, it's not going to be much bigger. So I can't even think of a case why that would have made a difference to us. And I like getting rid of the volume rule because that's been crippling for people. Other things, it's, it's, the present one is 41 pages long. The amended one is 47. And they're pretty much paragraph for paragraph. But the additional four pages is, is how they spelled out this, this whole section of nonconformity. Even though we got all the forestry out of there, the definitions section is much better done. And that's really important when you, when you're working through things that people, people interpret things differently. The better the definitions section, the better.
Is there anything in there about discharge pipes for septic systems? Like, you know, if you're on the river and you've got old sewer line, do you have to cut it off or cap it off or anything like that? Is that in this or is this a completely different topic?
I don't think there's any. When they redid along our river segment, those are all taken out.
They take them out?
Thankfully.
Because I went for a walk along the river and I saw discharge pipes sticking out still. So I didn't know if they were supposed to be capped off or taken out or what.
There may be some like foundation drains still present.
Just regular drains.
Or something like that.
Okay, but not septic.
Like perimeter drains, that type of thing. Around a foundation that just diverts the water away from the foundation. That's natural groundwater.
Okay.
That type of thing.
And there may be some sewer pipes left there that are just not used because when they put in the new line...
Yeah, they don't necessarily pull them out.
As far as they were digging, they were all out. That's a valid concern.
I just didn't know if that was in this new ordinance that we were adopting. If it said anything about that.
It does address septic waste. It's a requirement.
Okay, good.
And it's verbatim, just like our old ordinance. Those are the major differences that I saw in these. But I'd be glad to answer any question anybody's got.
And Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong. By adopting the state's ordinance, are they responsible for the enforcement? Or are we still locally responsible for the enforcement? I just want to...
We're responsible for it. And we're required to have the ordinance.
But I think it's cleaner if you have it up to date.
Sure.
I mean, if you were to go after somebody and we ended up in court, it's cleaner if your, if your ordinance isn't 20 years out of date and there aren't things in there that, yeah, you know, they no longer apply. You just have to go around and fix it.
Right, 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 right. Right, no, but I just wanted to clarify that on tape, that we still are responsible for enforcing our ordinance within the town. It's not as though we're turning it over to the state and saying, oh, now the state's responsible. I just want to get that so that everybody understands that. We're still, it's, it's still our ordinance for us to enforce.
Yep. And there are some, there's some areas where we have permits by rule where people make application to DEP to rick wrap or dig or something like that closer than 25 feet, those types of things. But it still requires a local permit, even if they got a permit by rule from the state. It, it is a good way to have it is local shoreline zone and ordinance. You've got local people. We have a planning board of five people and a code officer every month. And friends, neighbors. This tells us what you can and can't do, but we help you through that process. And if you can't do it, we'll say so. But we look at it as more of a chance, yes, you need a permit. How can we help you do that so that it's in conformity with the, with the ordinance? And if you're dealing strictly with a state agency, you wouldn't have that. You'd have the ordinance and the enforcement, but you wouldn't have that help in between from local people.
So is the purpose to vote on something, is to adopt it? Does it have to be voted upon or is it a planning?
At town meeting, yes.
So this is a hearing to let people know about it so that at town meeting, you will go forward as a, as a vote on it?
Yep. Yep, and it'll be a straight up vote. People will ask questions and we'll have to do our best to answer them. But at that point, it's time for a vote. And the purpose of a hearing is if people have difficulty with that, that we hear about it beforehand and if it's legitimate, we would address that.
And then the old ordinance would just go away? Is that what happened?
Yep, yep. They all, they all come. We adopted it in, let me just check, in March of 2000, the one we have. Every ordinance after that would be an amended shoreline zone and ordinance. So that's what this will end up being called is the amended shoreline zone and ordinance. The other little quirk to this is the select board, town manager, town clerk, George, planning board, appeals board, we all take an oath of office. And you take an oath of office to uphold the laws of the country, state domain, and municipal ordinances. We don't, we haven't done it yet. We should have been going by this right now because we took an oath to do that. So it makes you feel like it's a little point they ought to just cram it down our throat.
Well, this way, at least we all look at it. We all can discuss, you know, what's new and what's different. You get that information out there. You get the new information out there, you know? If they just sent us a packet every week, stick it in a binder and you wouldn't necessarily, you know, know what had occurred.
Do you send it out to, this is just like really crazy, but like do you maybe send a notice out to like all waterfront property owners in Sangerville? Because I mean, I don't even know how many there would be. How many would there be, like 50? And you just send them like we've updated to the new state waterfront ordinance? If you have any questions, come to the town hall. Are landowners made aware that you've done it? You know, I mean, like how do they know?
Not specifically unless you were rezoning and some things that hadn't been, the land was now in shoreline or in those cases. In this case, I put it in the paper two weeks before and a week before.
Oh, so it is, so people are notified.
It's on the website. It's at Provinson's, the post office, and Country Time. So we try to get it out there and if anybody has questions, they can call or come in. And if there were specific changes, like I said, to the zoning itself, we would have had to notify those landowners.
And the public hearing is something that we have, we're required to do. So this is something that we, right?
Yes, there's a very specific one for shoreline zoning. And that's why the two week notice, the one week notice, that's very specific to this one. For other ordinances, we don't necessarily have to have a public hearing because when you have a public meeting and it's a from the floor vote, basically you discuss it right then and there. And if people aren't happy, they just say, nope. And then, and then you know why. So for instance, I'm tomorrow going to be putting on the website and around town that we're going to be updating our fire department ordinance and some of our active military ordinance. And we may even be putting our property maintenance ordinance on there, but we haven't got that one.
Nailed down, yeah, right.
And we're running out of time, so it may not, it may not happen.
I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
And, and all of these ordinances are on our website. So anyone is, can open them up and read them.
The past ones are. As soon as, as soon as we put it out that we're having hearings, the ones that are going on, so the hearing will also be on the website. So you can just pull up and look at them.
And this won't be, if, if it's adopted, it won't be adopted until we vote on it as a town at our annual meeting.
Yes.
And once we do that, it has to go to the state and the state has to approve it.
Okay.
If we don't hear from them forty-five days, that means it's approved. If we hear from, if we hear from them, it probably means they've got a question. Okay, but there should be no question. It's.
Right.
Yeah, the, we did take some things out of the state one, but they were elective. Like we have no saltwater in Sangarol. We don't need that section for.
Right.
That I know of.
Oh, you shouldn't.
Yeah, right.
And those.
There was a couple of optional things that you, that as a planning board, you said, we're opting out of it. But those were optional.
Yes.
Addendums to what the body of the, of the ordinance.
Yeah, they wanted to know, in one section we took out was if we wanted a resource protection district two. They would have different specifications than resource district one.
Yeah.
We have absolutely no need for that.
Right.
There's, there's no wall nines building on this river. There's just, we don't.
Right.
We don't need to protect ourselves that way.
Yep.
So we did take out what was just cumbersome and didn't apply to us at all. And that was permissible, so. Hopefully, after we go to the trouble of taking it to a vote and if the people vote to adopt this, the DEP will approve it.
And, and Jerry, if, if the town does not adopt it, are we still with our old ordinance?
Yep.
But with them, we're not in compliance with the state. Right? Is that correct? Is that, because the state wants us to, to get up to their standards or up to their ordinance? Is it, is that, do I understand that correct, Lee?
Yes, I don't, we would, if, if it's not adopted, we'll just have to continue to use the one that is adopted by the town. And we'll be, in some cases, we're going to have to enforce the state minimum standards. And that's going to be awkward.
Well, if you got into one of those thirty percent
Right.
issues, state law trumps the ordinance, especially in ordinance that they're going to say, yeah, it's not even legal. I mean, you wouldn't want to enforce our ordinance and then have them say, I'm taking you, I'm taking you to court because you're not following state, state law. I mean, that's, that's the bottom line.
So that needs to be really explained. I, I mean, I guess. It, it's important to understand that, I mean, we really, as you said, it's a moot point. We kind of have to go ahead and adopt this ordinance.
A good example where we could become liable if we impose the thirty percent volume.
Right. Yeah. So, and that's what this hearing is for. It's for people to come and understand why we're moving on to this new ordinance. But, and hopefully, all those questions are answered tonight so that at annual meeting, we don't have a lot of people that are uninformed.
Yes, and I'm disappointed there's not more people here.
Yeah.
I weren't looking for any adverse
Right.
commentary on this, but, but.
That's why you have a hearing.
Bombed with it at town meeting.
Right.
That's why these hearings really were good.
Right. That, that's the purpose of these hearings. So everybody understands exactly.
If we had a lot of people here and there was a big outcry. You'd at least be prepared to.
Right, you know, yeah.
George, do you have anything you'd like to?
No, not really. If I keep quiet, you'll think I'm knowing something. But there's been a lot. I'll tell you right now, there's no question about our ordinance. Our ordinance has done so much for the state that so many people don't even know what it's done. To save, you and I know firsthand because of the Senate Palm are taking our septic systems out of there. But what I've had an opportunity to do is to compare, compare us to some of the southern states like Louisiana. And they still have raw material running into the waterways.
Yeah.
I don't know why they don't have something like we do. I think it was a guy by the name Eckard, I think, that came up with this first from the University of Maine. And I'm not sure, but I think it was him that had to get this going. Kept pushing our water and going until we got
Clean water.
The present ordinance now. And our ordinance that we have, even our old ordinance, is saving our environment and, and everything that goes along with it. But also methods to enforce them where you're not driving down the throat of people, but you're, people are being trained and brought along and shown the differences. And then once they understand what the good parts are, why, it's beneficial for everybody.
Yeah.
I'm really, it's going to come in these other places eventually. What's left of it?
Yeah, well, I feel fortunate that we've, that we've, really it's cleaned up a lot. Even on a municipal level, as a young man, I worked for Haley Construction and I stood right in some of those manholes out here with hip waders on, with pure poop running right around my boots, right into the river.
Oh, wow.
And I made up my mind.
Then you go catch a trout right down there.
And I made up my mind right then. If I had had the chance to serve on a planning board, that I would.
Wow, wow.
Those are the things I shaped, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we've come a long ways.
We have.
We've come a long ways. We may have some more to go, but we've come a long ways.
The paper companies and everything, their members have really cleaned up a lot, haven't they?
Yeah.
They're clean, they're clean.
Around the ponds, we had algae blooms in some places from poor septic design. And I don't believe we have any that I know of right now. Some of the situations have been uncomfortable, but we were persistent and we worked with the people. We didn't cram it down the throat. We helped them through it. And
Good thing.
Code enforcement's been good that way.
Yep.
We almost had to have a celebration when we got the last one out of the comb over there. The last septic system. And then we all knew it.
Yeah.
That did it.
That's good.
And then they began to see the benefit. And right down that shore, we had a rash of people putting in new sewer systems. Because they could see the benefit.
Yeah. That's good. My aunt used to throw her garbage right out the back, right into the river.
Whoa.
She did, when I was a kid. She would take all of her trash, that's how she got rid of her trash. She would go out back and throw it out in the river. And all the seagulls would come down. Float up to the river. That's where she put her trash. A lot of people did that. That's just the way it was done back in the day.
Wow.
Go to the water anymore.
Right. That's how we used to do it. And we didn't, I know, I didn't like it, but I was like. Even as a really small child, I was like, I don't think that's right.
Are there any other questions or comments before we adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
It is, it's moved and seconded.
Okay, there I go.
Thank you, people, for coming.
Thank you, Jerry. For explaining it all to us.
Stop.